Test, test.
The main thing is for this. Right, it's not from there, it was school safety. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. The time is nine thirty-one, and this special meeting of the Board of Trustees on July twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-five is called to order.
Good morning, President Hanani, Board members. My name is Marta Aguirre, and I am Superintendent, and this morning we have for you an overview of the legislative bills that were approved as this last month, and we've got representatives from Region Nineteen that will be providing the overview for you.
Good morning, thank you so much for having us. Good morning, Board members, Board President, Mrs. Aguirre. My name is Rachel Adama Anderson. I am a professional development consultant with Education Service Center, Region Nineteen. Thrilled to be here with you, and my colleague Eduardo Inojos is joining me today. He is the Assistant Director of Programs at Education Service Center, Region Nineteen. So, as Mrs. Aguirre has stated, we are here to provide an overview of the updates that came out of the regular eighty-ninth legislative session, and we'll go ahead and get started. Board members, you do have, and Mrs. Aguirre, you do have a booklet in front of you. Just as, by way of explanation, the first few pages are the actual slides with area for you to take notes, and the additional resources are full texts from the superintendent's update that was provided to superintendents by the commissioner right after the eighty-ninth legislative session closed. All right, we had an eventful eighty-ninth legislative session. So, the education bills were spread across more than ten committees, and the House Public Education Committee voted out one hundred and twenty-four of six hundred and ninety-three bills, and Senate Kate sixteen, education, voted out one hundred and seventy-seven out of four hundred and eighty-eight bills. So, there were nine thousand fourteen bills filed, tracked, that we're tracking, and education organizations across the state, such as Tazza-Tasby, were tracking one thousand five hundred and seventy-five of those bills, and of those passed, one hundred and forty-eight. So, we'll dive right into the education bills passed by the eighty-ninth Texas Legislature. So, just to provide some dates of interest, the session concluded on June second, two thousand and twenty-five, and that was the Senedea adjournment, which marked the end of the regular session. As you already know, on July twenty-first began the special session of this legislature, and that was issued on July ninth, identifying eighteen agenda items for the special session. That is, they are all currently being discussed. Please stop if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. The school funding bill, HB two, which includes SB five sixty-eight, we'll talk about those in a minute, that in a minute, HB one twenty, SB two sixty, and SB five sixty-nine, increased school funding formulas in several ways. So, this slide is really just informational. You can see here that the items in green were created or expanded by the eighty-ninth legislature. So, of course, as school boards determine how funds are spent within the district and whether the extra funding streams are accessed by the district, there are these additional funding sources to consider. So, in total, the factors under the district's control can increase maintenance and operations funds generated by well over fifteen percent. Just give you a moment, you do have the slide, as I said, in your booklet, but everything in green was expanded or added in this eighty-ninth session. And we'll take a deeper dive into these in a minute. So, House Bill two is the Public Education and School Finance Omnibus Bill, and omnibus, it did in fact have the kitchen sink within it. So, it was signed by Governor Abbott on June fourth. It added eight point five billion dollars in new funding. The bill is about two hundred pages long, two hundred plus, and it covers the allotment of basic costs, teacher compensation and support, early education, teacher preparation, school safety, and special education, all of which we'll address during this presentation. So, just a note on House Bill two, the Public Ed and School Finance Omnibus Bill, there are, there's some new language in these bills and in statute. There are eight new permissive rulemaking clauses. So, by permissive, anywhere in the statute that you see the words "may" adopt rules, that is permissive and grants authority to local districts, or local authority to districts. There are fifteen new required rulemaking clauses. So, in these statutes where the words "shall" adopt rules, they are mandatory. So, there were four major government bodies affected by the education bills and H, by the bills and the legislation passed in HB two. That's the SBOE, the State Board for Educators Certification, the TEA, the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. This star indicates rulemaking will be crucial. The TEA is meeting now to translate all of the statute into rule. We are anticipating that the rulemaking process will be completed prior to September first, two thousand and twenty-five. So, as an overview, the bill overview is titled "Relating to Public Education and School Finance." It passed with bipartisan support, both chambers, eighty-three to sixteen, and it was signed into law by Governor Abbott and effective mid-June, two thousand and twenty-five. Effective June fourth, two thousand and twenty-five refers to the implementation for this upcoming school year. So, where I have noted that there is a different ineffect date, you'll notice that on the slides. So, teacher salary and retention, huge part of House Bill two. So, the Teacher Retention Allotment, the TRA. So, for small districts, fewer than five thousand students, there will be a four thousand dollar raise for teachers who have taught for three to four years but under five years, and eight thousand dollars for teachers who have more, five or more years of teaching experience. The large districts, larger than five thousand students, were allotted two point five thousand dollars for teachers who have three to four years but under five years of experience, and five thousand dollars for teachers with five-plus years' experience. Base funding was also increased. The basic allotment rose from six thousand one hundred and sixty to approximately six thousand three hundred and eighty dollars per student, and the teacher incentive allotment also expanded merit pay tied to student outcomes. Additionally, support staff compensation increased. That's also known as the SSRA, the Support Staff Retention Allotment. Districts will receive forty-five dollars per student based on ADA, and the statute is, does include the formula funding for that, and I can get that information to you after the meeting. To boost salaries for teacher aides, for bus drivers, for cafeteria workers, et cetera, the support staff compensation does not apply to campus administrators, district administrators, only to the support staff. And there's an annual requirement to maintain this increase beyond two thousand and twenty-six. Special programs and safety, HB two was very heavy with special programs and school safety. So, special education funding increased by eight hundred and fifty million dollars additionally for equity, for the purposes of equity. And campus safety allotment received four hundred and thirty million dollars extra, which actually doubles the support allotment to twenty dollars from ten dollars per student. And basic cost assistance increased to one point three billion dollars for utilities, transportation, and insurance. Certification and staffing initiatives, quite a bit is in House Bill two. Again, there is more detail on those slides in your booklet where you see the TEA logo. There is great detail in terms of what that looks like and further explanation within the statute itself regarding certification staffing. So, exam and certification waivers have passed. So, first-time certification fees, those teachers who are seeking their first-time certification in the state of Texas, will have their exam fee and their application fee waived for special education and bilingual educators, and that will save them roughly two hundred dollars. So, residency programs for new teachers have been expanded in HB two. So, with that come two, ten thousand dollar incentives for the district to pursue the teacher residency route, to provide those stipends for teacher residents. And there is going to be, there is an effect now, in fact, a ban on non-certified teachers and core classes by two thousand and thirty, and that mostly has an impact on our districts of innovation. So, here is just a quick table that shows the area in which there was an increase in the allotment. So, in the basic allotment, that was two hundred and twenty dollars per student. Educator salaries, four billion dollars with those teacher incentives. Teacher raises for small districts and veteran teachers, as I just referred to, amounts to about eight thousand dollars. Teacher support staff funding, forty-five dollars per student. So, we also have the Public Education School Finance Implementation and Compliance section here. So, required of the school board to take action, districts must update the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six salary schedules to reflect the teacher retention allotment, the TRA, and the SSRA, the Support Staff Retention Allotment. TEA will oversee the preliminary foundation school program reports and provide those to the districts, as well as other updating formula changes. Part A of HB two, Article Four, relates specifically to special education supports. So, this actually resolves a one point seven billion dollar funding gap that was due to increased identifications of students receiving special education services and the removal of the eight point five percent identification cap in the state of Texas. So, six hundred and fifteen million dollars was allotted for sped in this upcoming school year, with a two hundred and twenty dollar base allotment increase per student, which is the first in six years since two thousand and nineteen. There is a one thousand dollar reimbursement for districts and campuses for each FIE or individual, full individual identification. And also, there is additional funding for supporting and recruiting and retaining staff, special education teachers and staff. So, that comes with grants that will allow districts to hire and retain their special education teachers, their paraprofessionals, their related service providers, occupational therapists, physical therapists, and your board-certified behavior annualists. Part A, HB two, Article Four continues. There's quite a bit in there for special education finance. So, the big change in formula funding this year is with extended service, extended-year services funding, and also tier-based support funding. So, the school districts will get the full basic allotment plus a weighted special education rate per student for regression prevention programs, so to keep our students progressing and in fulfillment of their IEPs. Service group funding transition. Here we go. Created the Special Education Service Group allotment, and that is in Section forty-eight point ten twenty-one, with TEA-defined service intensity tiers, and the transitional funding under that Section forty-eight point ten twenty-two ensures an eight hundred million dollar increase approximately in two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six. And there's also now funding within HB two, Article Four, for video recording equipment to be placed in special education settings for monitoring and for safety. Questions so far? So, again, the amount of funding that a school receives for special education for each student will now be based on the student's individual needs, and that's what we refer to when we talk about tier-based support funding. So, that approach would be, is in fact, a significant departure from the current system, which directs special education funding to schools based on how much time a student spends in a particular setting. So, for example, two students who are placed in the same classroom but require different levels of support receive currently the same dollar amount as in the current settings-based funding model. So, proponents and special education educators across the state, and the rationale of the bill's passage and this inclusion in HB two, is that this system will better serve special education students who have varying needs. So, for example, a deaf student may require a different level of support than a student with dyslexia, and this provides schools more funding to be able to pay for those services according to the individual's students' needs. Part B of HB two relating to, this is SB five sixty-eight, Comprehensive Special Education Reform. So, again, this shifts the current time allotment, or the service-based time allotment, to the tier-based intensity model for funding. So, students, again, will not be funded based on where they spend the majority of the day but what services they receive. Service group allotments, funding will be allocated for each six-week span that a student receives eligible services, and this will be based on four TEA service groups. And initial evaluation funding, again, to ease the burden of identifying students under special education, will provide at least five hundred dollars per student for initial evaluations in the prior year. So, transitioning from special education to school board meetings, and are actually required meetings from, for special education, that the school board is required to conduct. So, at least once a year, the Board of Trustees shall, and again, that's one of those required clauses, during a public meeting, discuss the performance of students receiving special education services. Performance indicators for measuring and evaluating the quality of learning and achievement for students receiving special education services will be considered at a meeting. The indicators must include performance on college career and military readiness outcomes as described in Section forty-eight point one one zero. Any questions about this? So, this is just a slide giving you a comparative summary of HB two, Article Four, versus SB five sixty-eight relating to special education. This is in your booklet, if you want to just take a moment to process the slide, because there are different funding levels of support in HB two, Article Four, and SB five sixty-eight.
What page would we find that book?
This would be...
Eddie will... It's just a little... It's just a small one?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, that takes us away from House Bill two to Senate Bill two, the Education Savings Account Bill, which establishes an education savings account, the ESA program, to be administered by the comptroller, and this fund would be an account within the General Revenue Fund. It does require the comptroller to adopt the rules necessary to implement the bill by May fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-six, and the program will actually begin in twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. The bill is for, includes language and additional funding for parents of students with disabilities who do apply for the ESA. In this case, school districts must perform a special education evaluation and develop an IEP for that student. Funding will be provided, again, via formula funding under the HB two. Moving on to HB six, Student Discipline. There are several changes in House Bill six related to student discipline, including increasing the allowable days of in-school suspension from three to ten for students, removing mandatory placements in DAEP or alternative education for vape possession, and it also provides funding for virtual DAEP placements where those are available. Within HB six, Student Discipline Behavior Management key provisions were added. A single person must be now designated at each campus as the Campus Behavior Coordinator or the CBC. That CBC, Campus Behavior Coordinator, will monitor the disciplinary referrals, report behaviors and trends to the Behavioral Threat Assessment Team. And teachers now, statute stipulates that teachers may remove students from class for a single incident of disruption, bullying, or interfering with instruction, and no documentation is required from the teacher before removal. So, regarding those class removals by a teacher, the student cannot then return to class without the teacher's written consent or a return-to-class plan from the coordinator of behavior, campus behavior coordinator, the CBC. Students may appeal their disciplinary referrals. Teachers and staff are protected from discipline if they report all Chapter thirty-seven offenses and remove students in good faith. The board may, this is one of those permissive clauses, may adopt parent involvement policy for disciplinary placements, and may reduce placement duration if the student and the parent comply with in-school suspension. With regard to ISS and school suspension, there is no time limit, but the student's placement must be reviewed every ten school days. For vaping and e-cigarettes, first offense, a student may receive up to ten days in ISS and school suspension, and in certain cases, a student may be expelled to a virtual education program. Again, those DAEP virtual placements where they're available. Key provisions within the Discipline and Behavior Management in HB six stipulate the districts of innovation cannot exempt themselves from Tech Chapter thirty-seven relating to student conduct. The TEA reporting requirement is that TEA must send the Discipline Law Update Report to all districts, LEAs, before the beginning of school year two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six. That will likely come out in a, to the administrator address from the commissioner, and in a commissioner's call with superintendents. LEAs must report, provide this report to parents once it is available. Again, that is one of those required clauses. All right. Moving on to additional Senate bills. SB eleven seventy-three refers to procurement. SB eleven seventy-three increases the procurement threshold to one hundred thousand dollars, excluding fuel, before a competitive procurement bid is required. SB five sixty-nine relates to virtual education, and as finally passed, it does expand virtual education options available to students in Texas public schools, providing public schools greater flexibility to offer virtual education. HB twenty. HB twenty creates a new applied science pathway for students, for high school students who are seeking a high school diploma, as well as a career-oriented certificate from institutions of higher education, IHEs, in the applied sciences. So this is an exhaustive list of those twenty pathways in the pink box to the right. It also directs the Commissioner to approve partnerships between school districts and institutes of higher education to allow for students to earn credits so that they may earn a diploma as well as an industry-based certification in these twenty specific areas. The bill does take effect in this two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six school year. Program will expire in two thousand and thirty-one. This rule has been adopted now in nineteen tax Section seventy-four point one zero zero three. House Bill fourteen eighty-one. I know, every hush falls over the crowd. The cellphone ban. School, this is again required. Requires school district boards and charter school governing boards to adopt a policy that prohibits students from using their personal communication devices while on school property. This requires that the district's policy establish a disciplinary measure for students who violate the new policy. It does allow for students, for adjustments for those students who are on a five oh four plan and whose five oh four plans stipulate the need for a communication device or cellular device, as well as students receiving special education services, where that is also stipulated in their IEPs, or any necessity based on the school's safety protocols. And I have real big in yellow here that school boards have, it was ninety days after the effective date, so that's effective June twentieth. That was the effective date, so ninety days, I believe that's September fifteenth. To adopt the cellphone policy, the TEA must provide a model policy. So that should be forthcoming. Questions here? Yes, sir?
Do you have a sense of how detailed that model policy will be coming down from the TEA?
It should be as, it should be prescriptive based on the language and statute, which is likewise prescriptive. So it, the statute, you can also find it in Texas Education Code, Section thirty-seven point zero eight two, which also stipulates the amount of time. So for example, if a device is confiscated, the tech stipulates that a student's family or guardian must be notified ninety days in advance of the item being disposed of, and that it will be disposed of after ninety days. So for, yes, so it's very specific. So that will most likely, in fact, it will show up in the TEA model policy. So also, if you look deeply into the statute, you'll see strike through on the fifteen-dollar fee. But again, that will be a local policy decision, and that will be also stipulated by the TEA model policy. Any more questions here? That's all we'll say about that. House Bill four zero one relates to UIL and non-enrolled students, and this was effective immediately June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five. So SB four oh one requires, does not allow, requires a public school to provide an otherwise eligible non-enrolled student the opportunity to participate in UIL activities on behalf of the school unless the school district board adopted a policy, and I put that in little asterisks there because it is a requirement now that school boards do adopt a policy allowing or disallowing the opportunity to participate. Again, this relates mostly to our homeschool students. The Board of Trustees of a district, here's your permissive rule, may adopt a policy declining to grant non-enrolled students the opportunity to participate in league activities. So in other words, the default is students will be able to participate who are non-enrolled, but Board may adopt a policy declining that. Senate Bill twenty-three fourteen relates to mytexasfuture.org, which is a portal that is created, was created to assist students with college applications and financial aid. So Texas school districts and charter schools must, again, the required rulemaking clause, annually notify parents or guardians about the option to create or update their profile on mytexasfuture.org, must inform them about data sharing opt-in requirements, and must allow students or parents to opt out of certain programs. So before graduations, students must decide whether to establish an account on the My Texas Future website. And there's the big star that says the bill takes effect immediately. House Bill fifteen twenty-two relates to the Open Meetings Act. So school board meetings must be posted, the language has changed, at least three business days in advance of the meeting date. So prior language said seventy-two hours, so must be three business days. School board meetings where the budget will be discussed must ensure that the budget is fully accessible to the public, either digitally or in physical copy, and that an estimate of property tax impact is provided. Senate Bill eight forty-three relates to a new bond database. TEA has been required to establish a database to track all bonds, taxes, and bond-related process, projects rather, and districts must report all of this information into that database. Again, the TEA is in the process of creating that database, and notification will be going out to LEAs soon. Senate Bill fourteen fifty-three relates to INS interest in sinking rates. Districts cannot set an INS tax rate higher than what is needed to pay their debt for the year unless the school board votes to approve it. If the higher rate is approved, the district must tell the public how much lower the rate would have been without the extra amount. Any questions here? Senate Bill four, give you a moment to let that sink in. Senate Bill four and Senate Bill twenty-three, Property Tax and the Homestead Exemption. Homestead exemptions increase from a hundred thousand to a hundred and forty thousand dollars, subject to voter approval. Homestead exemptions for the elderly or disabled are increasing from ten thousand to sixty thousand dollars, again, subject to voter approval. This bill does provide for the requirement that all tax rate and school finance funding plans for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year assume that these provisions pass. Districts will receive additional state aid equal to the amount of the reduced INS collections from the homestead increase, given any outstanding INS debt as of September first. And again, if you're looking for it in the Texas Education Code in tech, you can find more specific language, Section forty-six point zero seven one. Questions here? Senate Bill two oh four relates to the Parent Rights Handbook. School board members must complete a training on parental rights in education once it's developed by the State Board of Education. Once that is out, we will notify you as will the State Board. The TEA must create a parental rights and education handbook, and school systems must provide that handbook to parents each year. Senate Bill four thirteen relates to board meetings, and it mandates, I have that in bold there, mandates that the Independent School District Board of Trustees must document and publicly post detailed minutes of their meetings, including attendance and voting records, within seven days. It also requires the recording of all regular and special meetings. HB two-ten relates to vendor contracting. A vendor that bid on or received a contract from a school district or an open enrollment charter school commits an offense if any member serving on the Board of Trustees or governing body of the district or school had a substantial interest in the vendor or subcontractor hired by that vendor, was related in the second degree to an individual who had a substantial interest in the vendor. I should note that the language there stipulates second degree of consanguinity, so blood relation. Or had received or been promised a gift of or in-kind services with a value of more than two hundred and fifty dollars. SB thirteen, otherwise known as the Library Bill, entitles parents to access information related to the library books that are being accessed by their children. This does clarify library material prohibitions related to harmful material. Harmful is stipulated within the statute, and it's stipulated within tech. So harmful material, profane content, and indecent content. Again, these are spelled out within tech. This bill also clarifies that school districts are permitted to establish local library councils to help with the review of new materials, material reviews, or collection guidelines. Library material challenges must be accepted from any resident, parent, or staff member, and local library councils must offer a recommendation related to that challenge within ninety days of receipt. In essence, these, SB thirteen was introduced in the eighty-eighth legislative session and added or amended in the eighty-ninth. It addresses distinct areas of Texas laws. One concerns financial institutions and energy boycott, but the other deals with school library materials. And both will, of course, lead to changes in Texas Administrative Code, which is currently being written into rule. Further, Senate Bill thirteen stipulates that districts and charter schools must create procedures that allow parents to access each school library's catalog of available materials, submit a list of materials their child may not check out or access the library, and parents must be able to submit that list using an electronic or physical form, so both are required, or through the school or the district's online library catalog. There is more information there, as I've noted with the asterisk, related to definitions of harmful or profane material under Section forty-three point two four of the Texas Penal Code. Pause for questions. House Bill one hundred relates to instructional materials rejected by the Senate Board of Education beginning with the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Excuse me, school systems may not purchase or use materials that have been formally rejected by the SBOE under its EMRA process. So the instructional materials audit has been implemented, and all potential vendors of instructional materials for the state of Texas must submit to the EMRA rubric audit, and the SBOE will, based on that audit, either accept or reject those materials. The current session or round, I should say, of the EMRA process is underway. There is a list that was approved in December two thousand and twenty-four, which districts are working off of right now. Questions here? Again, the rationale here aims to ensure that instructional materials align with state standards and are age-appropriate. And so there will be more within rule regarding local school districts autonomy. Senate Bill ten, The Display of the Ten Commandments. A public or secondary school shall display in a conspicuous place in each classroom of the school a durable poster or framed copy of the Ten Commandments. That, the bill also stipulates that it must be sixteen by twenty inches. It also must be legible to any person, reasonably legible to any person. School districts must accept donations of this poster that meets specifications in order to display them. School districts may choose to purchase them. This act applies beginning with the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six school year is effective immediately. Senate Bill eleven, School Day Period of Prayer. School districts may, again, a permissive clause, may adopt a policy requiring a period of prayer or reading from the Bible or other religious texts in their schools subject to permissions being received from parents, not later than six months after the effective date of this act, which was, which is nine one two thousand and twenty-five. So no later than six months after that effective date, each Board of Trustees of a school district shall take a record vote on whether to adopt the policy. Senate Bill twelve, twelve is also known colloquially as the Parental Rights Bill. So I have divided it into topics relating to parental rights within SB twelve. Relating to curriculum and instruction, districts are required to adopt and implement policy related to the posting of the instructional plan or syllabus for each course taught in the district prior to each semester. Districts must offer at least two parent-teacher conferences annually from the one required. Human sexual, human sexuality instruction now requires an opt-in. Previously, it required an opt-out on the part of parents. Students must now opt-in, rather, parents or guardians. DEI is prohibited in school districts. Boards must annually certify compliance with DEA and CRT or Critical Race Theory prohibitions. Sexual orientation and gender identity instruction and student clubs are prohibited. The effective date is September first, two thousand and twenty-five. Parent engagement under Senate Bill twelve stipulates each board must develop a parental engagement policy that provides an online portal through which students, parents may submit comments to the campus or district administrators and the board, requires the board to prioritize public comments by presenting those comments at the beginning of each board meeting, and requires board meetings to be held outside of typical work hours. Districts must have parent participation plans and communicate them annually to parents. Districts must report trustee names, email addresses, and terms of offices to the TEA. Questions here? There were several bullets. Relating to grievances. Senate Bill twelve clarifies the requirements of local school district grievance processes, including filing and appealing timelines. SB twelve requires ISDs to post information about their grievance policies online and provide TEA with the webpage, allowing grievances to be submitted online and providing info on how to appeal grievances at each level. If more than five parent grievances are ruled in favor of parents after appeal to the Commissioner within one given year, the superintendent must appear at a hearing of this SBOE. New in Family Code and Education Code under SB twelve, SB twelve adds as a parental right, the right to designate the school the child will attend and to enroll the child in the school subject to any eligibility or admissions requirements. Onto Senate Bill five seventy-one, Misconduct Reporting. Superintendents are required to report to ASPEC and TEA within forty-eight hours of the superintendent's awareness that there's evidence of misconduct towards students or minors by an individual employed or seeking employment of an LEA, charter entity, ESC, shared services arrangement, or service provider regarding abuse, physical mistreatment, or neglect of students, involvement in or solicitation of a romantic relationship with a minor or student, engagement in sexual contact, inappropriate communications with a minor or student, failure to maintain appropriate boundaries. And SB five seventy-one also updates the child abuse reporting deadline by professionals to the Department of Family Protective Services or law enforcement to twenty-four hours instead of the forty-eight hours under the previous law, under the current law, rather. Senate Bill eleven ninety-one relates to calculations of grade point average. This Senate Bill requires the Commissioner of Education to develop a standard method of computing a student's high school grade point average, or GPA, which will grant equal weight for non-CTE advanced courses. which will grant equal weight for non-CTE advanced courses, such as AP, IB, the on-ramps, dual enrollment, and dual credit courses, so they'll all need to be weighted equally. This grants a different amount of additional weight to dual-credit CTE courses. This does require a school district to use this standard method to compute students' high school GPAs, and the Commissioner must develop the standard method as soon as practicable after the effective date, which was June 20th, and that is currently underway. House Bill 27 adds to high school graduation requirements a personal financial literacy course. So that is, relates to the requirements in social studies. So requirements have changed from economics and personal financial literacy to personal financial literacy with the additional requirement that students take a full credit of economics, world history, or world geography. And the change takes place for students starting ninth grade in the '26-'27 school year. House Bill 3372 relates to personal services by administrators. Administrators are prohibited with certain exemptions from receiving any financial benefit from performing personal services to businesses that do businesses with their own districts, from curriculum businesses, or from other LEAs or ESCs, education service centers. Violations can result in fines of up to $10,000. HB 33 is titled also Uvalde Strong. It relates to emergency operations and school safety requirements specifically relating to active shooter situations. The House Bill stipulates that emergency operations plans must include standardized crisis communication protocols. There's more detail coming up. Campus security equipment, each campus must have at least one breaching tool and one ballistic shield. Facility construction and renovation, all school construction or renovation projects do require a formal security review. Additionally, training and protocols have been added under HB 33. ALERT, which stands for the Advanced Law Enforcement Rapid Response Training Center, must develop an active shooter response training template by December 1st, 2025. There are additional personnel certification requirements. An independent school district must employ or appoint a public information officer who must obtain certification in emergency communications from the Texas Division of Emergency Management. There will also be continuing education requirements for that individual. By September 1st, 2026, all public information officers employed before the bill's effective date must have the TDEM certified emergency communications credentials. So that gives districts a year. Law enforcement collaboration, collaboration has been specified that DPS, Department of Public Safety, and local agencies must conduct biannual emergency drills and enter mutual aid agreements by January 1st, 2026. You can also find more information in tech, Section 37.1087. Additionally, to school safety, we have House Bill 121, which clarifies existing school safety requirements. Districts must annually review and renew any good cause exception for armed security personnel, and emergency operation plans must address prevention, mitigation, preparedness, response, reunification, and recovery. Questions here? Behavioral threat assessments are also included in House Bill 121. School safety clarification, again, to existing school safety requirements. For special education behavioral threat assessments, if the student is in special education, receiving special education services, the assessment team must include at least one of the following members: the special education teacher, a licensed behavioral analyst, a licensed clinical or master social worker, and a licensed specialist in school psychology. And per House Bill 6, relating to student discipline, it may also include educational diagnosticians or behavior specialists. Moving on to liability of public schools and professional employees under House Bill 4623. House Bill 4623 applies to superintendents and administrators, including chief executive officers, principals or equivalent operating officers, teachers, substitute teachers, supervisors, teachers aides, school board members, school counselors, social workers, nurses, bus drivers, and students in educator preparation programs. Specifically stating that public schools are liable for acts committed by employees against students if the school was grossly negligent, reckless, or engaged in intentional misconduct. The liability applies to acts involving sexual misconduct or failure to report suspected child abuse or neglect per the Family Code, Section 261.101. The employee who committed the act must be named as a defendant in any legal action. Damages and costs are up to $500,000 per claimant and include court costs and attorney's fees. A waiver of immunity, governmental immunity of public schools is waived to the extent of liability under this bill. Official immunity of public school employees is also waived under this liability. Oh. Well, that appears to be the end of our presentation. Just kidding. It isn't. There we go. Thank you. Senate Bill 991 relating to chronic absenteeism. Chronically absent students, and those who are truant, defined as 10 or more days unexcused, or parts of days within a six-month period, are added to the list of students at risk of dropping out of school. A chronically absent student is absent for school more than 10% of the school's required operation in instructional time within a school year or an enrollment period that exceeds 30 instructional days. Whether or not a student is considered chronically absent will be collected through a PMS submission. So, again, as at-risk students are coded through PMS, so will the chronically absent student. District and campus reporting will be required on truant and chronically absent students, and the TEA must annually aggregate at campus and district levels and make publicly available the data on truancy and chronic absenteeism. New curriculum requirements, there are actually three bills on this slide. Senate Bill 24 establishes new requirements to the social studies curriculum in Texas public schools requiring an in-depth understanding of communist regimes and ideologies from grades four through grades 12. House Bill 824 adds instruction on the following topics to the high school social studies deeks: the role of local, state, and federal officials, the voting process, eligibility requirements for running for elected office, Robert's Rules of Order, and the elected officials who represent students. Senate Bill 1207 expands the parenting and paternity awareness program for middle school and high schools to include information on adoption and adoption as an alternative to becoming a parent.
We have a question here?
Yes, ma'am.
SB 24, are they changing the teeks?
Yes, the teeks will be updated to reflect this.
What does that mean? Understanding of communist regimes and ideologies? Will there be an explanation?
There is an explanation, such as it is, in Texas Education Code right now, and once the TEA has adopted rule, we will have a more explicit definition.
And then the teeks will be updated when?
They are to be updated by the end of 2026, is my current understanding. But again, we will find this in 19TAC as soon as it is committed to rule.
Okay, thanks.
Again, we will follow up on the exact date of that teeks revision. Regarding medical intervention, House Bill 549 requires school districts to have airway clearance devices available at each district campus in a location on campus where students consume food. At each location, the district must ensure at least one employee is trained in the proper use of the device. Senate Bill 865 requires that a school district, or private school and a charter school, train all staff that are working with student athletes in CPR and AED. That's Automated Electronic Diffusator. The districts must also develop an emergency cardiovascular care plan. Senate Bill 2398 requires the agency to develop a list of non-medical interventions for students diagnosed with a concussion or other brain injury. The bill also requires the policy of what should be done upon realizing a student has suffered a concussion. Again, this requires the agency to do so. For your reference, as we are eagerly awaiting the creation and adoption of rule in 19TAC, if you'd like to stay up to date on agency's rulemaking, you may also subscribe to the newsletter. You'll find it at www.sos.state.texas.us/texreg. And so it's the Weekly Texas Register. That's the Journal of the State Agency Rulemaking for the state of Texas. I recommend looking at the PDF version. It's updated roughly weekly. And information published in the register includes proposed, adopted, withdrawn, and emergency rules, action notices, state agency review, governor's appointments, attorney general opinions, and miscellaneous documents, such as requests for proposals. And after adoption, the rulemaking actions are codified into TAC, the Texas Administrative Code, and are posted to the website no later than 5:00 PM on the publication day. And of course, you may sign up for the Texas Education Agency's Rulemaking Newsletter. Bearing in mind, of course, we are still in the midst of the special session that began on July 21st. For your reference, Texas Education Agency, the school safety and legislative updates, as well as the TEA monthly superintendent call of the 89th Legislature, which you have there in your booklets, Texas Legislature Online, where you can actually track any of these bills, and the Texas Association of School Administrators, TASA, and Texas State Board of Education. Watch those spaces. And with that, I conclude my presentation and would like to open it to any questions or clarifications.
Are there any questions from board members about anything? Trustee Quayre?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you, Mr. Quayre.
With the special session right now, are there any hot button topics right now that, okay? I say any, I'm sure there's a bunch.
There is one specifically related to education. There are several hot button topics, including language around the, or legislation around legalization of hemp-related substances. But related to education, we have the abolition of the STAR test that is being considered at the moment. So yes, great question, but that is the one related to education.
And that site, I guess, that'll give you like weekly updates, like you stated, it'll?
Yes, absolutely. So go ahead and I can go back to it. I do live at this.
At that site?
At this site, and I check it early and often. So sometimes I just have the tab open. I also, on Legiscan, highly, it's a wonderful tool. Anybody can go to Legiscan and track any of these bills, and you'll get those automated updates to your inbox.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Sutton?
Hi, again. I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
And this is maybe for somebody with EPISD staff, but also for Region 19. Did anybody in Region 19 attend any of these sessions? The legislative sessions? No, okay. Is that normal practice to not attend, or is it something that's a possibility that you could do?
We are limited on our funding. We are not the [inaudible].
Okay.
Certainly, and often we do attend the TASB conferences annually. We attend TASA annually.
Okay. Did anybody with the EPISD district go?
So we did not attend personally. However, we work with Texas School Alliance and Texas Urban Council. And through those alliances, we work or they represent and have conversations related to specific bills that are out. And we did have Paul Colbert, who assisted us in giving us updates as the legislature was passing out bills and having those conversations.
What does he do?
He is a legislator.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, my other question, so I've read a few of these laws, bills, and I can't find the answer to this, and I don't know if you know, and I'm happy to ask somebody else. So basically, what happens if these aren't followed? Because, I mean, is there somebody from the state? What do we have, like, we have about 3,400 teachers in our district. Does somebody come from the state and just go to every classroom to check that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, or?
That is not currently stipulated in rule now.
Okay.
My understanding, and of course, I am not an attorney, so for [inaudible]. But because it is in the Texas Education Code, the understanding is that districts are required to oversee the [inaudible].
Right, so then who's responsible? Okay. Sorry.
So, Trustee Sutton?
Yes.
To, sorry, to answer, sorry, I came from the clouds. To answer your question, if things are in the Texas Education Code that the district, it wouldn't be following or didn't follow, then that is for TEA to either open up an investigation if there's a complaint to follow up. Some of the laws themselves will have penalties that are embedded in each of the laws, but not all of them do. And so it's really a kind of, it depends on what the law is, what's not being followed, and if the law that's being passed provides for a penalty or some sort of ramification, then that's what would happen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the questions. Any other questions from any other trustee?
I just want to thank you for coming here today. I really wanted the entire board to have this legislative update because there are a lot of changes. I think more so than any year, at least, that I've been on the board. So we really appreciate you all coming down from Region 19 and giving us a very comprehensive overview. And I hope that we can reach out to you directly if we have any more specific questions.
Please do. I'm going to, I'm sorry, Ms. Carrasco, if you don't mind, putting the slide back up with our contact information. We are so grateful for the opportunity to join you today and to hear your questions. Of course, we are always available to serve you. And on behalf of Dr. Armando Aguirre, our executive director, and our fearless director, Barbara Maya, we thank you. And thank you for your time, and have a most wonderful day.
Thank you again.
I would just like to add that as we're, as these, there's a lot of information that's still being solidified as to what these bills really mean, or what we need to address. But administration is looking at each one of these new requirements, and we're all working towards solidifying how, what measures or steps we'll be taking to ensure that we're within the compliance of the law.
And our contact information, please find it on this slide. We live on our emails, so please don't hesitate to contact us. The time is 10:34, and this special meeting of the Board of Trustees has ended.